...the Whitefish City Council to order. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mary, Mary, if you wouldn't mind, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
.....................................................................
This is the time for communications from the public. If anybody has anything that they would like to address and to speak to the council about, now is the time to do that. There are no public hearings tonight, so now is your opportunity. And I want to welcome everyone to this council meeting. Yes, Mary, please, for the record, your name and address.
Yep, my name is Greg Sandberg, and I'm responding or commentating on Action I have number seven, which is the preliminary plot by Bevel Limited Partnership at 415 Colorado Avenue. I am the owner of what is known as Track Two, Colli Estates, which is the property directly east of the proposed subdevelopment. I really don't have any major concerns about what's being proposed, granted that it is going to be three single-family developments. My only concern with that portion of it is that it is, they are currently using this as a ploy to get around development restrictions and zoning restrictions. With that being said, I only have a couple of major points. I'll keep it quick. It's pretty standard stuff. One of them being is fire services and emergency services access, especially towards the eastern portion of the site, which I believe is, he's calling it Property Three or Track Three. I see that we do have basically a fire engine turnaround, which is great. There is a fire hydrant out there. My only concern on that matter is whether or not, you know, from that fire hydrant to the eastern portion of that property is about 450 to 500 feet. I just want to make sure that we ensure that if something were to happen, because that whole half of the five-acre parcel is heavily wooded, that fire service would be able to respond. The second item that I have a little bit concerned about is, on the preliminary plot, there's no show of anywhere for snow storage. In this little neighborhood that we live in, there's not a lot of space to put snow. And I'd prefer to see something, you know, where we could actually put it built into the final plot. Third, which is a common item for basically a city itself, is stormwater runoff. In this particular area, we have a high water table. Soils are tight, salts and clays. I do know that previously on Mr. Bevel's last development, a stormwater conduit was put in place to service this eastern portion of the property. Right about the center between his property and my property is about the area where it starts flowing east and west. I'd just like to make sure that as we move forward, that the stormwater runoff does actually move towards the east and not onto my property. As I've seen with a lot of the recent development around my property and the regrading of houses and properties as houses have gone in, my property is quickly becoming a low spot. And so as they move forward, I'd like to, you know, make sure that planning and zoning ensures that the stormwater is collected and dealt with accordingly. The fourth part, which is kind of the major reason that I'm here, is regarding what's shown on the proposed subdivision as the no-build zone. Prior to myself and Mr. Bevel owning these properties, an agreement was made restricting some of the use on his property. And one of the things that came out of that was the no-build zone. I've talked to senior in planning over the years. I've talked to city council about this over the years. The response that I've got was, this is a private matter, and this needs to be dealt outside of us. Mr. Bevel and I have had conversations, which led to a legal battle that went three or four years, which eventually went to the Montana Supreme Court to be decided. And what was kind of decided out of this decision, and I've included it in some comments that I submitted last week, is two parts. One, that he would be able to develop his portion of the property as he sees fit, which he is doing. And the other portion is the, what's shown as the no-build zone on his proposal, which is basically a designated green space. And with that being said, you know, that includes, you know, specifically no buildings, no roads, no this, no that, no improvements. And moving forward, that would include, you know, even things like stormwater basins. That would be technically an improvement. It's been a long battle between both of us, and what he's doing, like I said, I don't have very many objections to. I just want to make sure that we move forward, that that's observed. And like I said, it's taken us a long battle to get here. We've dealt with it. It's gone to the Montana Supreme Court. I've submitted all the result or all the hearings and everything that's come out of that to the city again. And I just would like to ensure that, you know, moving forward, that this is observed, not only, you know, with him and with the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Highland. I own the property at 467 Colorado Avenue, which is just across the road from the proposed development site. And I would probably just reiterate what Mr. Sandberg said. I do support very much the development, but also the single-family units. The stormwater drainage is important to me because of the high water table. I have standing water in my yard when the snow melts, so that's an issue. It doesn't drain off. The snow removal storage is also an issue. We have no place to put that snow at the present, and we have been using, you know, the side roads, but that's an issue also. Also, the fire truck ingress and egress is also an issue with the development, if it's going to be looking any further into a multifamily development. That would be a huge issue. And then the condition of the existing road. It is not a city road. It is a private road. It's a blacktop road. It is not in the best of condition now, and it will definitely need to be looked at and maybe have something done to it if there is more development in that area. So thank you for the time, for allowing me to express my interest.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else?
My name is Gay Osborne. I live at 465 Colorado. And like Cheryl and Greg, I have no problem with a single-family home on each one of these lots. But what nobody has mentioned is, when I talked to Courtney, the realtor, he told me that, and I didn't, I just called up to say I asked about the property. So he's assuming I'm a possible buyer, and he tells me it's zoned for 14 single-family units. That concerns me. Again, because we have a clay base out there, and everybody has water in their backyard. And that's great when you mow it, if you want to get your lawnmower cleaned. It's not so good if it's coming in through your house. And the cities, the properties are arranged so it's not supposed to drain onto city streets. But we have nowhere for it to drain if they totally fill up the area. We also have nowhere to put our snow if everything is built there. And that's my big concern. I live a little closer to Colorado, so I'm assuming the fire truck's going to get in there. But I'm concerned for the houses on Cedar that are already built there. If the fire trucks, if you have, can't get into the houses behind the houses on Cedar, then, you know, how are you going to keep the fire from spreading? So those are my major concerns. If the city sticks with one house per lot, I've got no problem with it. But I'm concerned that somewhere down the line, we're going to be back here discussing, could we put 14 family units in there? Thank you.
Thank you, Gay.
Hi, my name's Erica Phillips. I actually live at 732 Cedar Street. And just like the people that live around there, I am concerned on the water issue. My property actually is the end, the very east part, and that property is right behind it. And so all of the water that drains in my backyard fills, of course, with water as well. And then I am also concerned of the emergency services, because I was under the assumption that it was multifamily, like 14 units going in, because I've been told that before. And if they build on the full lot, then the access to get to it for emergency services doesn't seem like it's there. It seems very limited, and my house sits right behind it. And if something would happen in that forest area and that property, catch you on fire, my garage is right there. So I do have concerns on what's going to be built there, not necessarily the splitting of the lots. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, I'm George Good. I own the property at 351 Colorado Avenue. And these guys were supposed to put in a French drain between me and the housing development to the north of me. They didn't do it. They were supposed to do a lot of things they didn't do. And I don't see them actually doing any good with what they're doing now, because they haven't done what was supposed to have been done on the original plat for 407. And I don't think they're going to follow through on whatever they promised on this. And I got one other concern, that right where the road goes in the back and tees against the south side of that property, there used to be a private dump back in there. Are they going to take care of that problem, too? Back in the 30s and the 40s, one larder's on it. See, I, this has been in my family for over 100 years now, and I know everything about that neighborhood. So I just don't really like dealing with people who are not, what I would say, honorable. Because when they didn't put in the French drain, they had the 407, they put gutters in it, and it dumps the water right underneath my house that's cracking the foundation. And this has caused a lot of damage, and I'm not in the mood to put up with any more of this. So I'm just pretty much opposed to it, because the guy's an idiot. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else wish to speak during this period of public comment?
My name's Jessica Dodd. We live at 712 Cedar Street, pretty much echoing the same sentiments that have been expressed with the water runoff. Where we live on Cedar Street is right where the storm drain currently is, and anytime we get any sort of substantial rainfall, the street already floods. In speaking with all the surveyors over the last five years that have been surveying this property, every time they've said, we can't get a way to figure out how to get emergency services vehicles in here safely. And our, excuse me, our yard does butt right up to that property there. Another thing I'd like to mention is that intersection at Cedar and Colorado is already so heavily populated with people driving way too fast. It's a neighborhood of small children. And, you know, should it be single-family homes? I guess that wouldn't increase the traffic too much. But if they're talking about 14 units going in, I just can't imagine the amount of increased traffic on that street that's already dangerous and people drive too fast. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Mulcahy, sand surveying, Two Village Loop. I'm representing the owners of the property and their subdivision. We are only proposing three lots with a note on the plat that it would restrict it to single-family development. So the only way that anybody would ever be able to lift that would be to apply for another subdivision and essentially come back in front of you guys to lift that condition. And the same is true of the no-build zone. That gets formalized on the final plat, so it's a restricted open space area, just like any of the other open spaces that you've approved through countless subdivisions around the city. We did have preliminary stormwater looked at on this plat, and that's one of the reasons why we're only going with three lots, is so that we do have snow storage and we can manage our stormwater on-site. And we've taken this plan and previous concepts through site review at least twice and worked with the fire department on the turnaround and the access and the fire hydrant locations. So we've tried to address all of those issues that have been brought up by the public. But we think that with the single-family restriction, we'll pretty much be addressing most of those concerns. And this is an infill project. It's a large piece of property. It's just oddly shaped, and so it's hard to work with, which again lends itself to the three-lot configuration. I don't know how anybody could get 14 lots in there. I mean, we've looked at it. I don't think you could. You'd have to shoot the stormwater out with a cannon or something. That'd be the only way to do it.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else wish to speak to the council?
Hi, I'm Tom McClure, and I own 401 Colorado. We just had a question more than a comment, and that is, are there height restrictions? Because there's concern about line of sight into the backyard and into the homes that are on Colorado already. So I don't know if the surveyor could address that.
Thank you, Tom.
Matt Foles, 221 Tremble Lane. I'm not here to talk about this development. Sorry. I'm the Director of Sustainability with Xantera in Columbia Falls, and we operate the free glass collection site. And we were notified this month that Newer Recycling is selling their business. And so, you know, to date, we've done over 250,000 pounds of glass at that site, just this year alone. And so we're working to try and find a buyer for the company. And there's clearly a demand, but we also want to show the value on the back end from the reuse of the recycled glass. So I'm just asking the city council to consider any project that might include, you know, sidewalk repairs or, you know, work with concrete or landscaping, that we consider the use of recycled glass to show the commodity value of it, to continue recycling of glass in the valley. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Anyone else want to avail themselves of this opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move right on then to communications from volunteer boards. Any communications from volunteer boards? How about council members? Nothing there. Well, that will move us then right on to the consent agenda. And I'll need a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
I'll second.
And seconded. All those in favor? And it passes unanimously. Thanks, Michelle. No public hearings. Oh, wait a minute. A recommendation, oh, that was in the, public hearings, none, communications from the planning and building director. Oh, Bailey. I looked over to you, Wendy. Thank you. Thanks, Bailey.
The only downside with having it as a public meeting, not a public hearing, is I don't get to give my staff report before a public comment, because a lot of questions can get answered. So this is a request for preliminary plat approval for a three-lot subdivision. The subject property is approximately 1.744 acres. Currently, the entire property is vacant. However, there is a portion of the existing private road that is located on the proposed Lot One. Lot One would have a lot size of approximately 31,000 square feet. Lot Two is approximately 11,848 square feet. And then Lot Three is approximately 37,800 square feet. That proposed Lot Three does include the no-build zone area that was discussed during the public comment. That's approximately 4,965 square feet, so that's why that Lot Three is a little bit bigger, just because it does, it has to be something. We have to consider every area of the subdivision. If it's not a road, public, you know, open space, it's a portion of a lot. So all three lots will have access off Colorado Avenue by the private road and utility easement. The applicant is proposing a 50-foot-wide road and easement for the first 255 feet of roadway, and then decreasing the easement width down to 30 feet wide for the remainder, and I'll get into that a little bit later. They're asking for some subdivision variances to reduce the road right-of-way width, to utilize some swales instead of installing curb and gutter, and then requesting not to install sidewalks on either side of the private road. So I'll get into that, those requests at the end of my, towards the end of my presentation. So the property is located at 415 and a half Colorado Avenue, just south of Aspen Grove Court and north of Cedar Street. The subject property is split between two zoning districts. The northern portion of the property is Zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district. And the southern portion of the property is Zone WR3, which is our low-density multifamily district. And as I said, it's just developed with the private road that's out there. It is surrounded by residential uses. They all have similar zoning between WR2 to WR3, depending on the area. The property, it is located, obviously, within the city of Whitefish. They will be connecting to all city services and utilities. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the property on September 20th. I also placed a sign on the property. And since writing the staff report, and at this time, nothing else has come in, but I've had four comments that have been received. The majority are very similar to the concerns you heard this evening, the potential for multifamily dwellings or further redevelopment of the property, also some concerns about the preservation of the trees that are on the property as well. So going right into the criteria, the Whitefish Fire Marshal, he has reviewed the project. As Eric mentioned, it did come to site review a couple of times. They are acceptable with the hammerhead turnaround at the end. They are also going to approve any placement or redesign of any hydrants, new hydrants prior to their installation. And actually, the Fire Marshal did have one condition that he wanted on the plat that we are proposing, and that's any homes more than 150 feet away from either an existing fire hydrant or a new fire hydrant will be required to be sprinkled. So if they do build all the way back on the end of that lot, they will be required to be, the residential house be sprinkled. And that is proposed as a condition of approval and also a note on the face of the plat, so both two places that it would be visible. As I said, the property does have an existing 50-foot-wide private road easement off of Colorado Avenue that is currently paved. They are proposing to extend that to the south with a 30-foot-wide easement, and all three lots would have access off that private road. The Fire Marshal is also requiring that the private road be named for emergency services, since right now the addresses are just off of Colorado, but you do have to go back off of that road. Due to the reduced width of the proposed private road, we are requiring a note on the face of the plat that only single-family dwellings may be permitted to be built on these properties. That does include their accessory, well, or accessory buildings, like garages, sheds, those types of things as well. But no duplexes or multifamily dwellings would be able to be constructed within the subdivision. Their proposed subdivision would generate approximately 30 trips between the three lots, so no traffic impact study was required as part of the request, since it's less than the 200-trip threshold that we have in our standards. Colorado Avenue is classified as a collector, and it does appear adequate to meet these, the anticipated traffics from these three lots. So groundwater monitoring was completed in the spring of 2018 by Foley Engineering. They did submit that information as part of their request. They did three well sites that were tested. All were documented as dry. But obviously, we know there is high groundwater in this area, and further review will be conducted when they do have to submit their stormwater management plan and their plans for sewer and water connections. So Public Works will be able to look into that more. There are no surface water sources at the subject property, though. A stormwater management plan will be required to be submitted and reviewed by the Public Works Department prior to final plat, as it's estimated that with the road being paved, it will exceed the 5,000-square-foot threshold, or that will be confirmed by Public Works. Then the draft stormwater management plan will require further review, again, to determine if stormwater would be able to go in that no-build zone, as the public comment mentioned. That's, you know, they'll have to look into that further as to what those, what that agreement states and what can and can't be done there. But they are aware of that as well, so. City water and sewer mains are currently located along the existing private roadway. All sewer and water connections will be reviewed by Public Works and Montana DEQ prior to construction. Parkland dedication is required for the proposed subdivision. Since the lots vary in sizes, there are two calculations that they look at. Lot Two, since it's less than half an acre, has an amount of 11% of the net acreage of the subdivision. And then Lots One and Three, because they're between half an acre and an acre, have a calculation of 7.5% of the net acreage. So the total parkland dedication, I estimate it around 6,484 square feet. Since it's less than the 10,000-square-foot threshold, the Parks Department does want that as cash-in-lou. And that value would be determined at the time of final plat for the appraised value of the land at that time they submit, as obviously, things can fluctuate year to year. So the growth policy designation for this area is urban. That does correspond to the WLR, WR1, and WR2. As I said, it does have a split designation between WR2 and WR3. However, since the proposed use is just for three single-family homes, that does, that is compatible with the urban designation of that, with the WR2. The proposed lots do exceed the minimum square footage required. It does appear setbacks in lot coverage can be met. That would be confirmed at the time of a building permit is submitted. And again, since the WR2 and WR3 do allow for duplexes and larger multifamily, we are requiring that note on the face of the plat that only single-family homes are permitted. And that's due to the constrained access towards the rear of the property and the reduced right-of-ways. So going into their variance request, the applicant is requesting variances to two sections of the subdivision regulations. One is 12414A regarding that private streets be constructed to city standards, and the other is 12417B regarding sidewalks being installed on both sides of the private road. The standard city right-of-way for a private road is 50 feet? That's not right. 60 feet? 50 feet wide. I think I might have a typo. 50 feet wide, minimum asphalt width, oh, no, sorry. I'm getting a, I'm thinking of the part that's already existing. It is 50 feet. It's the 30-foot section. So the applicant is proposing 30 feet for the new portion of the private road, which would run north-south through the development, and that's the part that's requesting a variance. The asphalt width would comply with the 20-foot requirement for the private roads. In addition to the right-of-way width, they are requesting to deviate from the city standard that curb and gutter be installed along the private road and instead utilize bio-swales, natural track dams, and some fire retention pond, some for more low-impact development. And then finally, they're requesting to not install sidewalks along the entire portion of the subdivision. So we evaluate their request according to the criteria for subdivision variances, and just to make a note that the regulation states that the variance shall not be granted unless all of the conditions are met or found to be nonpertinent. So the, let's see. So since we are requiring that the lots may only be developed with single-family homes, although the zoning and the lot size would permit larger, the do, it does appear that the reduced right-of-way does seem appropriate for just three single-family homes, maintaining that 20-foot-wide right-of-way. The property is also irregularly shaped. As Eric mentioned, it is considered an infill subdivision, so there are limited rooms to treat stormwater and deal with those types of areas, as well as wider, wider road right-of-ways. So they also are requesting the deviate from the sidewalks, as I mentioned. We did discuss this during site review, and we actually are recommending that sidewalks be installed on only one side of the private road instead of both sides, due to the, just providing a safe and separated pedestrian access all the way from the very last lot on Lot Three, all the way out to Colorado Avenue, just because you're already reducing the shoulder width of the road and then paving it 20 feet wide. There really should be a separated area for pedestrians. be a separated area for pedestrians to also walk internally in that area. Let's see. So existing access from Colorado Avenue is only 50 feet wide, therefore, it's not possible to increase the road right-of-way to the standard 60 feet, since the adjacent lots have already been developed in compliance with the setbacks. So, sorry, I'm trying not to read verbatim. I'm not very good at that. As I said, the property is unique. Regarding the zoning is split. The no-build zone is required as part of the settlement of the lawsuit, therefore, it cannot be moved or changed. And that, again, that further reduces the area of the usable area for the property for roads, stormwater, sidewalks, things like that. So it does appear that the hardship is the result of topography and other circumstances that are over the control of the applicant to change at this point. Their request to deviate is not financial. As I said, it's got a unique shape, limited access for stormwater. The variance request to not install sidewalks is somewhat financial. The applicant, they're claiming that it doesn't make physical, fiscal sense to install sidewalks for only two adjacent lots. But again, as the pedestrian access, it just limits it even further, and we would like to see sidewalks on one side of the street, just to help facilitate those pedestrian access points. The variance would not cause substantial increase in public costs. It is a private road. Since it's not going to be able to comply with our public road standards, it will not become a city road. The city will not take maintenance of that, so there are no increases to city public costs as that. All construction maintenance is the responsibility of the developer and future homeowners. We are requiring, as a condition of approval, that the developer does come up with either CCNRs or a road user maintenance agreement for the lots that are impacted with this road, for things like stormwater and snow storage as well, to deal with that, as well as any future maintenance costs of the road itself. So that is proposed as a condition. And then approval variance is not going to place the subdivision in non-conformance with city policies. They are still, we're going to be required to pave the road to 20 feet, and will still need to submit a stormwater plan that the low-impact or low-development strategies will be able to work and convey the stormwater that would be generated from the property. So we do find that the conditions are, conditions for granting relief are met or not pertinent, and we are recommending that the variances be approved. And we are also recommending that the council approve of the preliminary plat request. And I do have 23 conditions that I included, just a couple of them that, again, the public, that were brought up at council. So seven is that an engineered stormwater plan will have to be approved and reviewed by the Public Works Department. Condition eight, they will still, since they're only requesting the road right-of-way deviation in the curb and gutter, they will still be required to install streetlights and other improvements that are required for city standards along that as well. Any residential home more than 150 feet away from the fire hydrant will be required to be sprinkled. That's condition 10. Condition 11, that the private road be named for, to facilitate emergency services. Condition 13 is the cash-in-lou of parkland amount. Condition 14 is, again, that each lot may only be developed with a single-family dwelling and associated buildings, no duplexes or multifamily. I put that in two places, so that it was very obvious that that's what they, what they're being approved for. Condition 19 is a tree retention plan must be submitted to our office that shows that the trees greater than six inches in diameter that are outside the building envelopes will be maintained and preserved, so it's not just a complete clear cut down there. Condition 20 is that they install the five-foot-wide sidewalk along one side of that private road. And then condition 21 is the notes that are on the face of the plat. And again, I put the residential homes more than 150 feet must be sprinkled and the only single-family dwellings. And then condition 22 is that they submit either the CCNRs or the road users agreement or something to show the storm, stormwater management and the snow storage for the private road as well, so. But I can answer questions or things that the public brought up if you have more.
Questions for staff. Frank?
It's my little, my little question I have to ask. Why, why are we going to require that that, a home 150 feet away from fire hydrant has to be sprinkled? It's not too tall, 100 feet ain't too far. It's just like, we're just like layering cost in here, and I know Joe's got a preference, but I just, I don't get it.
I, that's a question you'd have to ask Joe. I know, I mean, they, the main thing is the concern with that Lot 3. That's the big one. And as the, as the neighbors have commented, I mean, if you get back, I can't remember what the, what the distance is, but, I mean, if you get back that far, I mean, that's, that's what the concern is that Travis was asking him about. But you'd have to ask Joe more technical questions, unfortunately. That's what they told me to add, so.
Anyone else?
I'm just curious, does, does anybody know what the height, you know, requirement or limitation?
So zoning, primary dwellings are allowed to go up to 35 feet. That's citywide. Just, only the downtown area can go to 45 feet, but, and that's to the highest part of the peak of the roof, and it's from natural grade, not from finished grade. So.
I'm assuming that if they can't come up with an acceptable stormwater plan, then at least one or two lots would be deemed unbuildable, or some other?
They could. Yeah, and that, again, gets into the engineer doing the calculations of what the road and how they all magically come up with those numbers that are beyond me. But yeah, so they would look at that, what the site's capable, obviously, what the infrastructure that they're proposing to put in, or I know that there is a pipe, Karen was in a meeting with us, and there are some, some avenues that they do have to look at, but obviously, yes, if they can't figure out how to do it, then yes, lots go away, so.
Okay. Would ADUs be permitted?
In the, yes. So we allow them in all of the, all of our zoning districts, allow accessory permits. They would have to come back for a conditional use permit under our current regulations at this time, and that does obviously notify the neighbors, goes to Planning Board and City Council as well. But yes, they could, if they choose to in the future, an owner could request an accessory dwell, or accessory permit through that process.
And I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I'd love the neighbors to hear this too. Are short-term rentals permitted in this particular area?
No, they are not permitted in this area, so.
All right. And that brings me to my last one, at least for now. And that is the trees. I went out and looked at those trees today. I'm a little concerned, I mean, I understand the need and the want and the desire to preserve those big trees, but looking at some of those spruce trees, they're double stems, which doesn't make for a strong, sound tree, and they're getting a little big for spruce trees. And so is there any plan to have those trees evaluated by a licensed arborist? I, I just, I just want the neighbors to be aware of what the problems may be when people start to look at those trees. One of those lodge poles seemed a little weak to me, too.
And that would be part of, what would, and Eric can probably answer this if he, if you want him to come up and answer more questions as well. That would more than likely be part of that tree retention plan that we do, is so it just says, you know, have somebody look at them. If they're unhealthy, obviously, we don't want them to be saved, or if they are going to cause safety hazards, obviously, the spruce trees are usually the first ones to go in big windstorms with shallow roots and things like that. So that would be part of their tree retention or pre-preservation plan that I have conditioned, and I think it was 20, what did I say it was? Condition 19. That was close. And so that, that would be something that they could come back and say, you know, some of these aren't really worth keeping or are causing more of a hazard than, than a benefit at that point, so.
Is there any plan, then, to have that, just as a neighborly thing, communication with the neighbors to discuss those trees? Because clearly, based on what was in the packet, neighbors are concerned about the trees, and a way to kind of run that by them and say, I'm sorry, but this tree's?
It'd be up to the applicant if they chose to do that. I don't think it's something I can require them to do. But the final plat is definitely something that is public record, that obviously, that they would be able to see that when it was submitted.
Okay. So the tree retention plan has to be part of final plat?
Final plat, yep. So what they'll have to submit, something that they would then have to show to meet that condition, that would then come back and be part of the council packet at final plat.
Okay. Any other questions for Bailey? Then I'll need some kind of a motion.
And Eric, obviously, is here. If you had more questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any more questions that you have as well, so.
Any questions for the proponents? Representative, oh, Angie, yes.
I'm sorry to interject.
Thank you for waving me down. No, I appreciate that very much.
Adam is actually trying to call Travis to see if he can ask about the 150 feet from the fire hydrant sprinkling requirement.
I can live with it.
You can live with it? Okay. All right.
Okay. All right. Then I will need a motion.
Somebody's got to do this. I would move to approve the preliminary plat for the Bevel Limited Partnership for three-lot minor subdivision, including all 23 conditions, including but not limited to the one restricting each lot to no more than one single-family dwelling.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you wish to discuss it further? All those in favor? And it passes unanimously. Thanks, Michelle. Oh, and Adam stepped out for a telephone call. So does anyone have any questions on Adam's report? Oh, Angie, sorry. Did I make a mistake here?
No, but we need to talk about the ordinance for snow removal.
Oh, ordinance for, sorry. I jumped the gun here. Ordinance for snow removal. Yes, please.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. I am Maria Butts this evening. And this ordinance is just basically a housekeeping issue. We are allowed by Montana law to allow or authorize or make the owners of adjoining premises keep their sidewalks safe and free of snow. We've had just, no, I wouldn't say few issues, but some questions about shared use paths that pass by people's house, whether or not they have to keep those clear from snow. And so Craig, Maria, I think Dave was there, and I just sat down and did some housekeeping amendments, and we were hoping to get them into effect before the snow flies. So Maria's report begins on page 169 of your packet, and just to kind of highlight some of the changes, we added shared use paths in addition to sidewalks throughout the ordinance. We added the specification that all shared use paths be cleared to a minimum of five-foot clearance, because they're, you know, eight foot, they're bigger. So when people would call and ask, well, how much do I have to clear? We'd check, would always tell them five feet, which is about the, you know, size of a typical sidewalk. We didn't think it was fair to make those people who live along these paths clear an entire eight-foot swath. We removed before 10:00 a.m. in the morning. Part of that is just enforcement mechanism. It's pretty hard to figure out who has and has not removed snow before 10:00, and we just thought it would be better just to say, get rid of the snow. That's fall in the night before. Adam also had some concerns that we were holding residents and business owners to standards that the city itself can't meet on some of our sidewalks and paths that we maintain, so we took out that language. We added a section for obstruction of the right-of-way. We had some issues last year with people burping snow in front of bike paths, in front of sidewalks, so we added that, although we did provide an exception for basically public streets downtown that don't have a center area that they compile snow. They are actually allowed to shove it into the street, so. And let's see. We added his or her, Richard, caught that one, designee, so for the city manager to enforce the ordinance. I mean, certainly, Adam's not going to be making these phone calls. We wanted him to be able to designate our code enforcement officer to make the call. And finally, we added a 20% administration fee to the ordinance if we actually have to hire somebody to go out there to clear sidewalks. We're hoping to, now that Major's been with us for a while, we're hoping to enforce our ordinance in a more even-handed and assertive manner. So, you know, there is administrative costs that comes along with getting hold of someone to do it, hiring them to do it, putting that on somebody's tax bill. So, other than minor stylistic changes, our original ordinance, I think, was written in the 50s. It was a little bit clunky. Those are the highlights, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Angie Frank?
Angie, there's one section of path along 7th Street that runs along, I can't remember Janet's last name, right, right there at the corner of 7th and Carroll. Her property runs east-west, and she's probably got 300 feet or more of shared youth path. Janet is well into her 60s. This is not even a remotely possible thing for her to do. We have in the past years, because we run the park and recs plow on that path anyway, I want to, I'm concerned about her being somehow responsible under this ordinance for the cost of what we have done to keep that path open, because we want to keep it open, knowing full well that there, most of this ordinance is somebody for 150-foot lot. This just doesn't work over there. How do we address that?
Frank, you know, we've had that conversation, I think, among staff. I mean, there are certain circumstances where people just can't do it. They're elderly, they're injured, and I think as staff are willing to work, if that is the situation, we're certainly, you know, willing to work with the property owner. We wouldn't be citing her, you know, we'd be, you know, trying to help her out. So I, it's not meant to be a burden on, I mean, I understand the situation, and I think there's going to be different situations like that throughout town, but it's certainly not intended to be punitive. I think it's staff in the city who are certainly willing to work with people that have circumstances like that or just can't do it.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else for the comment?
I would just, so, if you notice that something's happened?
Your microphone.
If you notice that, you know, a path or sidewalks not being cleared, do you, how do you reach out to them? How do you, do you send a letter? Does somebody make a phone call, or what?
Well, right now, we kind of have a rather burdensome situation. We contact them, we get them time to do it. If they don't do it, we contact them again, and eventually, we just hire someone to go do it. We would like to streamline that process a little bit. Certainly, we would give somebody notice, hey, can you take care of this, and not just plow it ourselves and charge them for it. So, but the process we have right now, we give people quite a bit of time, and the worry of giving people two or three notices is that somebody's going to fall in front of their house and be injured. So, but we would definitely give them notice and an opportunity to remediate before we would hire somebody and charge them for it.
I just was curious if somebody personally reaches out, because I mean, you know, you can like put a sign on their door or whatever, but, you know, without knowing the circumstances of why it's not getting done, you know, that kind of.
And I, yeah, and again, I think if we, even if we were to do door tags or something, and somebody were to reach out to our code enforcement officer and say, I'm 80 years old and I can't do this, we would certainly work with them.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? I'll need a motion on ordinance 18-33. Frank?
I would move to approve ordinance number 18-33, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 2, Section 2, snow and ice removal of the Whitefish City Code.
I get a second?
I will second.
Melissa seconds that. Any discussion? Frank?
Angie, I'm torn on whether I can support this or not. I understand our, our good intentions. How do I get comfortable from a purely legalistic ordinance, how it's written qualification that, that one in particular circumstances, because it's been raised before in years past, we've worked with it, we've been very good about that. I just want, help me here. Does our legislative discussion this evening add any value to somebody in Janet's position with similarly? with similarly lengthy, I mean ridiculously lengthy sections of sidewalk or shared use path, in particular, is what I'm thinking, that they're, if they can, if they ask for a waiver, they're going to get it, or, I mean, is there, or if they present the right circumstances, that we'll get that, I mean, how do I get comfortable here, that I'm not just leaving it with, my worst scenario is the developer says, oh, we'll do that, and then we don't make it, write it down, and then guess what, they don't do it, and I just, get me comfortable.
You know, and that's, Frank, that's a tough one, because it is legislative, and so it should apply, you know, at least on the books, equally to everyone, I guess the only assurance I could provide you was, is that our conversations, and even writing this ordinance, have been that there are going to be circumstances where people simply can't do it, and we will work with them in whatever way we can to make sure it gets done, and they're, it's not making their life miserable, so, I mean, I, I can't see exempting certain properties, or exempting, you know, properties with a certain amount of frontage, and I know that's, that's kind of hard to swallow, but I just think that from a legislative standpoint, it does have to be in the books, is applying to everybody, and we can work with people in their individual circumstances.
All right.
Craig was going to, Craig raised his hand.
Comment with respect to Janet Collins, you know, she did come in and talk to city council as we were, I can't remember what stage of the West Seventh Street project, it was probably while council, I was presenting to council the final plans and requesting authorization to bid, and we talked to her specifically about the fact that we only required five feet of the 10-foot shared use path to be cleared, I could tell you right now, the first snow season, that winter of 2016, 17, her neighbor with his snow blower did the entire path.
I know, exactly, yep.
Last year, the Parks Department did add that West Seventh Street path all the way from up the gully and up to Carroll on their list, and I'm looking at the, the city's snow removal routes right now, and Parks, the Parks route does specifically show that, that piece all the way past Ms. Collins' house, so, in this particular circumstance, you know, I think the system's taking care of it, both through, you know, neighborly love and care, and then, you know, the city's actually adopted our, our policy and our plan to, to take care of her.
Craig, I think we've done the right thing, but I, the, that, that circumstance in particular, I think Janet gets concerned, rightfully so, she feels like if it's being, it's going to be her responsibility to do that, she needs to, to figure out how to manage it, and she physically can't and financially can't, but for Brock Wilson's goodwill and his ability to do it, it, that would have been a tough first winter, and we worked last year very diligently, and I, admittedly, our ordinance even then required that she do it, and now we're just amending it, and so she would still be responsible for doing it, I'm just, I'm just trying to search for a more certain solution than our goodwill, although it's, it's been pretty easy, it's been pretty good to rely on, but thanks.
Further comment? All right, all those in favor? And it passes unanimously, Michelle. Now we get to the written report from the city manager. Thanks, Adam.
Yep, you bet, I don't know if anyone has any questions on what you see on the report, but I do want to report back on some training that we had this last week, so last Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll just start with Tuesday, Tuesday, we had a half-day, maybe a little better, of leading through crisis training, this was put on by the Rutgers University Miller Center for Community Protection and Resilience, and they sent a crew of five guys out here to run us through this training, these guys are top-notch in their field, have years of experience, lots of boots-on-the-ground experience through numerous natural disasters, from 9/11 to various hurricanes in New Jersey, so they, they brought a wealth of experience with them, we had over about 52 people, I believe, in attendance for the training, I think it was a great opportunity to get all of the stakeholders, emergency-related here in one room at the same time, the next day on Wednesday, we had a tabletop exercise, we had about 37 participants, mostly from all of the same organizations that were here the day before, we just had a few less players involved, but it was another great opportunity to run through some scenarios, and be able to verbally discuss how we would go about doing this, that, and the other, and it was great time for networking, networking, establishing relationships with our partners, and also learning of their capabilities, and we were able to draw on their capabilities as of even two days ago on Saturday, and we were able to be even more prepared in case something were to occur, thank goodness, nothing occurred, everything went well, I think we had the appropriate amount of police presence, and so I thought we really hit that one out of the park, I was really pleased with, with our staff, I was pleased with the communication that we had, I think all those that needed to be in the know were in the know, and I think we carried it out well, we still have a lot of gaps that we need to overcome, that was one of the things that came out from the, the tabletop exercise, is that there are areas where we need to improve, there's certain pieces of equipment, not, nothing extremely expensive, but certain things that, except for maybe some of the, the riot gear, if we decide to go that direction, but most of the, most of it really isn't that expensive, but it's just a matter of, hey, we recognize the need for this, we need to get it and, and have it stored in such a way that it can be put to use real quickly in case we have an emergency, but all in all, I thought the training went really well, the feedback that I received from the participants was extremely positive, and so hopefully, we can move forward and continue to work on our preparedness efforts.
Anything else before we, that has occurred between October 10th and 15th? Anything else?
Nothing of significance.
Frank?
Yes, Frank? Sure.
Adam, do we have, as a result of that training and those two days, anything definitive in terms of flow plans, charts, who to call, what the protocols are, do we, do we come out of that with anything concrete?
Well, what we came out of that is just places where we're a little deficient, and so we're going to be formulating plans for closing those gaps, some of those gaps were contacts, and those are easy to get, we need a name, we need a phone number, how can we get ahold of such-and-such person, so those are the things that we're putting together now, and I think we're going to end up with those when all is said and done.
Great, thank you.
I'd take the opportunity just to thank Adam, city staff, for their participation in this exercise, I participated in both days, I thought it was very worthwhile, but certainly, I want to congratulate Adam for his professionalism and, and the contributions that the staff made, also want to recognize Michelle's effort to keep things going, and plenty of cookies, I appreciated that, and I am also, with regards to Saturday's events, I'm very, very proud of our community, I think that the community responded in a very Whitefish-like way to make people feel welcome, and show what kind of a community we really are, so, thanks very much for that, Adam, and, and I think it was a, a good exercise, and you're absolutely right, to figure out the gaps was probably the strongest, in my view, the strongest thing that, that came out of it, and we just need to fill in those blanks, and when we do, we'll have even a better incident command system in place.
Yep, agreed, and I got to really hand it to Bridger and Bill, they pulled Saturday off amazingly, I, I attended a briefing on Saturday, and then was able to ride around for a couple hours with, with Bridger and the gang to kind of see how things were going, and I was really impressed, I think we really hit it out of the park on that, so, thank you, Bridger, thanks, Bill.
All right, communications from Mayor and city councilors, the letter from Linda Young, asking city council to look into ways to reduce plastic bag consumption, that was on page 174 of our packets, anybody want to comment, any thoughts?
I think we need to do this, I, you know, we're, we won't be the first community to, to try to tackle this, I know it's a pain in the neck, I know that there's a cost associated with it, but there's a cost to this valley, there's a cost to our landfill, there's a cost that we just need to acknowledge and say, we just can't have that anymore around here, I'd like to build some kind of a voluntary effort on behalf of all of our retail partners and community, to, to see how we can come up with a plan that would be able to, we could eliminate those, I really believe it's, it's the right thing to do on any number of levels.
Do you think this is a possible task for our Climate Action Committee and our schools, as, as a place to, to begin the community conversation, because I think that's what it's going to require, is a community conversation, rather than a top-down or an initiative that comes directly from us, but I think it has to be a community initiative if this is something we want to do, is that?
That seems appropriate.
Okay.
I, I mean, Richard, I, I, I believe that this can be a very positive thing, with them taking the head or taking the lead, if that's what we want to do, I would also really like to invite some of our retailers into, into some kind of a discussion on how it would work for everybody, I mean, I really think we should do that.
Okay, great, all right, starting to my far left, Melissa, any comments, thoughts?
I'll just reiterate what you said about Saturday, and appreciate everybody who contributed to keeping our community safe, so, thank you all, and please share that, thanks with others that helped out.
Frank?
I probably should have done this a long time ago, but I really like Matt Fole's idea, I didn't, I would like us to consider, to the extent, I think we need to think through creating the market, if you want to call it there, for the recycled glass, so that we can make, it, as I understand it, it's pretty cheap date, but we got to create some kind of a market, and it is apparently quite useful in all kinds of paving uses, and all kinds of stuff, so, and Maria has got some proposals for some of the, some landscaping that they're going to do, various places, there may be a place for using some of that in some of those areas where she would use rock or otherwise use rock, but I, I think we ought to look at it, I don't, this is not going to solve itself on a, this, this global problem will solve itself on a local level, and I think we're, particularly this valley, is, is an area that we need to think about solving this on a local level, because there's just no market to get it out of here, so let's see if we can figure out how to do that, if, if it makes sense, I mean, I, I think, I think it would, but I think we ought to start thinking about, oh, can we use this, is there, is there a basis to do that, and encouraging our contractors to do the same thing, my opinion.
All right?
No comment?
I have a couple of things, I will also second Frank's comments, I made a note that wherever possible, I would like to see and incorporate recycled glass into city projects, public works projects, parks and rec projects, whatever, as well as our contractors, I would encourage the public that might be viewing this evening to please be sure and pick up fruit from your fruit trees, so we can help reduce bear attractants, I know they're out there, they're in all our yards, but please, if you can pick up the fruit, maybe we can help the bears along and get out to their, where they should be, rather than in the city, and finally, I would like to warn Craig about this, Craig, can you give us the Cliff Notes on snow plowing, parking, which side of the street, just one more time, so that everybody, I mean, we're going to have to keep working on this to make it work, and so, I want to take this opportunity yet, one more time, if you could, please.
Yeah, and I'll just say that the, the signs have come in, I believe all of them have been installed, there's 30 new 24-by-36-inch red, very annoying signs that have been placed throughout the city, they state, there's actually a lot of verbiage on them, but the intention that I'm trying to get across is that every single day of the week, from October 1st until April 30th, from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., you park on the odd side of the street on odd calendar days, and you park on the even side of the street on even calendar days, the intention with doing this every single day, and not just on snow days, is that we're really trying to train the public and get people used to it, so that when it does start to snow, people will not be beginning to understand the policy, but they'll actually be hopefully conforming to the policy, so that we can start our snow removal season effectively, we also think that beginning the alternate side parking October 1st will help with leaf removal and street sweeping in both the spring and fall, or the fall and spring, so, that's the gist of it, we do have warning stickers, which we're going to begin probably in the next week or two, putting out, so if you get a sticker on your vehicle, it says on it very specifically, warning, it's not a ticket, we don't intend to start ticketing until, I believe, snow starts falling, but we do have warning stickers that people are going to start getting, so, in addition to that, we'll be doing some Facebook posts and website posts, and hitting up Adam's email list, and trying to get the word out however else we can.
Do we have a copy of that sticker that we could give to Heidi to put in the paper in some kind of an ad, so that people know what they might be confronted with, I'd like to make this as friendly as possible, as we approach snow season, so people will want to comply?
Yeah, sure, Heidi and I can have a conversation about how we can most effectively do that, I think.
All right, great, thank you, anything else from council? We are adjourned.